We're going.
All right, we get started here. First thing on the gym, they had approval and accepted reading and adopted a budget amendment number one. That was solid waste. It was on our end.
What? I can't read.
Huh?
I can't read. What?
Huh?
I can't read for a lot of things.
Oh, that's wrong direction anyway. That's the first thing we're doing. We think it's the first thing you see, that's the statement. First thing you do. I got your jeans. I'm sorry. You can be in the gym with that right now?
I think I'm, but my picture's on the unit.
It's in here, but I can't not copy what it is. I'm doing it right here. I don't know, I don't see it.
I got the radar on. Yeah, oh, yes.
The ordinance related to fiscal year nineteen forty and we made clear that the Red County Fiscal Court has realized and rejected the same for the following fund. Do we have a motion on that? Skip the second reading.
Motion.
Okay, we're going to have a second.
Second.
That you done? Don't move it.
Uh.
Order.
Uh.
Ray Moore.
Uh.
Al Changer.
Uh.
Al Changer. Approval of first reading of budget amendment number two. The ordinance relating to fiscal year nineteen forty and the budget and made clear that the Red County Fiscal Court has realized and rejected the same for the following fund. The ordinance of the Red County Fiscal Court will come with a contingency. Do we have a motion on here?
Motion. Second.
Well, then they always find a motion.
Yeah.
You said, is that right?
Yeah.
Order.
Uh.
Ray Moore.
Uh.
Al Changer.
Uh.
Donnie Bush.
Uh.
Al Changer. Approval of budget transfers. Now, look at that white form. Take time, look at it, read it, read it. Thank you. Motion, real estate.
Second. Second.
Ray Moore. Ray Moore.
Uh.
Al Changer.
Uh.
Donnie Bush.
Uh.
Order.
Uh.
Motion, Changer. Approval of July five replacement. And reconsideration.
Motion. Second.
Is that Allison Donnie?
Yeah.
Al Changer.
Uh.
Donnie Bush.
Uh.
Order.
Uh.
Ray Moore.
Uh.
Al Changer. Approval of appropriate revenue addition report.
Motion. Correct.
Ray Moore, you say that, Order?
Yeah.
Donnie Bush.
Uh.
Order. Lou.
Uh.
Ray Moore.
Uh.
Al Changer.
Uh.
Order, Changer. Approval of July twenty nineteen, the following activity report.
And what that, that's a new report and what that is, that shows chronological order. Every deposit and every check written out of each fund. I just, that's what I'm saying about it.
Motion.
Ray Moore, second.
Second.
Donnie Bush. Order.
Uh.
Ray Moore.
Uh.
Al Changer.
Uh.
Donnie Bush.
Uh.
Motion, Changer. Accept and approve the calculation of fiscal year nineteen when balanced forward by following presented.
And all that is, is just, uh, it's what you carry over in each fund. And where the official settlement's not been done, I just, this is not a settlement of the prior year. This is just, this is what we have in each fund so that I can establish it and move on.
Motion.
That's, no, that's a fund, an activity report exactly, that else looks just like this.
It's one of those bills.
No, it's this one, that activity report.
It's this one, it's the other one.
Okay, yeah, it's after that.
You already get your order in the minute.
Yeah.
Oh, you did, okay.
About my day, isn't it?
Yeah.
Like, they, they ain't settled, that just never restart it up, where it was from. And when you came in. Do we have a motion?
So.
Ray Moore.
Second.
Al Changer, Ray Moore.
Uh.
Al Changer.
Uh.
Donnie Bush.
Uh.
Order.
Uh.
Motion, Changer. Approving the voiding of eighteen actions, which bring you to your most secure, but not to your end. And I'll post, that's it, she can't even reissue it.
And I'll also ring your house packet, this ends by following.
Motion.
Motion, Al Changer. Al second.
Uh, question. Uh, these three items are like, uh, whatever what they are. Uh, one is for one eight, one six two, amount sixty dollar for pedal. Another one is one hundred and nine, two one, amount eighteen twenty-two oh seven, a Chinese. And another one is five nine oh nine, and amount freedom dollars, a double Q.
We're doing them. Those on the board, which come in checks.
Right.
The, the, the pedal one was, uh, I thought I got the pedal flower shop thing. Well, if the ticket's in there.
Oh, yes.
Okay, well, the ticket's in there.
Well, they bought six two, right.
Sixty dollars for pedals.
There should be, there should be another one there for a flower shop too. One of them was Frank Facher's mom that kept on the physical form. And then the other one was.
I didn't see one for sixty dollars.
Just a second, huh?
They do, um.
Yeah. The last one, it's for sixty dollars, the pedal, I remember one's top, I said, fine. The, uh, the beetle.
And what else, though?
One of them, we did, we had a master that used to, I think it was a master, maybe, that takes away, uh, previous management.
Shane Lee's, uh, one nine, one one nine, two one, eighteen twenty-two oh seven.
Yeah.
You got another one here for three hundred dollars for Doug's Q.
Okay, Doug's Q, uh, was leaving for Bush on about all the ground up at Deview, uh, uh, when the horse trail came up back in April, we did it once. Another one, why I hear you saying, want you to know, you said no, but I hear you saying, oh.
Right.
Here's, here's the one on Doug's Q. Okay, Doug's, uh, shouldn't have been in the package there too, where Bush on Deview, he kept, uh, square yard, at twenty-five dollar an hour, almost three hundred dollars. And Shane Lee's one was he put, uh, uh,
Right here's.
We didn't have, we didn't have low lights over at the county garage that was working. They didn't even take them and all of the, the housing were all corroded up, so we put all our LED lights in. Uh, had them run some cable and connectors to a couple of them. Uh, then another was driven in five hundred dollar labor and thirteen twenty-two oh seven was, uh, the labor only.
The pedal was June claims, it says. Thirteen twenty-two was the labor?
No, 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 thirteen twenty-two with the lights and, uh, breakers and through and, oh, we had changed a couple of cables, connectors to it. Uh, I think we ended up putting two on the inside when we got the cameras, they weren't working, they got that, so. We got one from a cane corner, one on the inside, and another six around the building. But they did like it, I don't, too many incidents down the line, we were late to go through the cameras and, and we did it, uh, somebody taking it to Paul or something. And then the other one is, uh, Jimmy claim, that's who it was. No, I didn't know, thank you, Danny. Oh, yeah, yes, sure, that was for Shortish Hoodman. I didn't know, Jimmy didn't ring the bell, I said, here, uh, Shortish Hoodman on that, I said, uh, they sent right from the fiscal court. Do we have a motion on? Number eight. I guess we got one, would you like to walk me into that, Allison?
My second.
Order, second.
No, I don't think they know what.
Oh, I think you.
Who made them one?
I mean, my, my.
What about you?
I didn't buy it. I didn't hear him work.
I don't know if they'll, they'll be able to. Go ahead, you've got more than one time.
And these are all the ones that were on your house.
Yeah, these are, these are, they already checked my loan, I think, part of my due.
That you're on the general client, the general client.
Yes. I think I worked and done on, I feel like, I feel like, I think, I think six hundred and four hundred, tiny, six eighty or.
Motion.
Motion, Roy Darrell, Al second.
I told all these vendors up, guys, I mean, these.
Yeah, these were checks that were actually made out in June, we sent out.
There's two or three in there that don't go pay you, you know, it's handled.
But I didn't do it anyway, they paid, they paid all the time, basically, you've got something you want to take down.
Let's just, uh, why don't we just exclude those three and pay them out?
Question, there's voiding. Avoiding. Bureau number eight. The way I'm reading this. Approve the voiding.
Approve the voiding, true.
It says you're, it says approve the voiding.
Yeah, it's the voiding, did you ever say that? I was, and it was supposed to say reissue and she must, when she retyped it, she must have left it off. But it's, that's how it is committed to her.
I'll make a motion to the mayor, if I didn't set the three, then question.
Okay, and the pedal, for sixty, was it sixty dollars?
Sixty dollars. And then Shane Lee's.
Shane Lee's was.
Eighteen hundred twenty-two dollars and seven cents. And then Doug's Q was three hundred eight.
So the motion is to pay everything on the list except for three that you presented down. Pedal, pursuit sheet, Shane Lee's for eighteen hundred twenty-two dollars, seven cents, and Doug's Q for three hundred dollars.
Right.
Do we have a motion?
I made a motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Al Changer. Uh, Roy Darrell.
Uh.
Ray Moore.
Uh.
Al Changer.
Uh.
Donnie Bush.
Uh.
Al Changer. Uh, approval bid to disperse, I don't know how to see that, sixty-four thousand thirty dollars for solid waste fund for the Wolf, for the Wolf County Fiscal Court, which is Wolf County, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, recycled. I can't remember where that was, they drive around a hundred. I don't know why they don't send us one in, send Wolf County one, but I think we ended up around thirty-something and, uh, their reimbursement of sixty-four, so. Anybody want to make a motion?
Motion, second.
Ray Moore, make a motion, Al Changer, second, Ray Moore.
Uh.
Al Changer.
Uh.
Donnie Bush.
Uh.
Order.
Uh.
Al Changer. Approval to disperse thirty-six thousand eight hundred thirty-two dollars to Citizen Banking Trust, suggestion for the payoff of loan. And that was, uh, the sheriff's department, uh, radio, we had to get five more, it was a hundred percent reimbursement. Uh, we've already made one, interest, interest payment, we'll probably attempt to make another, but we have a motion.
Motion, second.
Al Changer.
Uh.
Donnie Bush.
Uh.
Order, uh, Ray Moore.
Uh.
That won't be tied into a online security, seems to support that.
Uh, approval to disperse amounts owed to Bud Cat, which is number nineteen, eight hundred, in amount of eighteen hundred dollars. FEMA DR forty-three fifty-eight, T W one ninety-two Smith, Frank Reller.
Motion. Second.
Al Changer. Donnie Bush. Donnie Bush.
Uh.
Order.
Uh.
Ray Moore.
Uh.
Al Changer.
Uh.
Approval to published advertising listing bids for FEMA DR forty-four twenty-eight test drilling services to establish state for open bidding. Uh, FEMA's kind of changed their direction, usually we'd get a bid and, and now they want a corporate before we do, uh, any bidding to see how long it's still, I mean, that just makes sense to me, but, uh, we need to advertise that for, for test drilling.
Absolutely, to date, I would.
Yep. But it's gonna be hard to do, one, it's time two weeks, and then I don't know if they can jump on a corporate, I mean.
No, this is the bids, before we know the bids.
Well, we have, we have to have a test drilling and get a price on it, or it's going on a pile before they can actually bid on the project.
No, this is the bids to do the test drilling, not the project itself, this is the bids just to do the test drilling.
Right, but how we gonna establish a date to open it? Oh, to when they turn again.
Yeah, they turn the bids in before we tell them to go.
Do, okay, well, do we have to advertise after a week?
I know it, it follows the seven twenty-one rule.
So if we advertise it, we advertise this week, we can actually go seven to twenty-one days and go in and.
We can keep regular meeting this month.
Uh, if it's gonna be the third week, it's probably what we can do, let's see. Did it come out in the third, will it come out to the fourteenth, or will it?
Well, I can get it, you know, if I can get it out, that's right.
Yeah, again, back to, um, actually, cause we come up with any one night, fourteen. Uh, when we put down the twenty-second or third day? Maybe that's.
Cause if it, if it goes to fourteenth, seven days, it's through the twentieth.
We're getting to Friday, we, let's go ahead and establish a date for August the twenty-third at ten o'clock. That's on Friday. That'll be eight days after.
First and all, with prosecutor's conference and covenant.
You want that?
First and all, with prosecutor's conference and covenant.
How much is twenty-sixth then?
Leaving Tuesday the twentieth, it'll be back Friday the twenty-third.
Gee.
So, what, what you, I thought y'all discussed having it the third Tuesday, which is.
When we talked about when they never put nothing in.
That's what I'm saying, I mean, I'm just. You guys have discussed the third Tuesday.
Right.
And that would be the twentieth.
So, we run seven days on them.
I'm just saying.
Right, we have to advertise at least seven days, it's a seven twenty-one rule. Uh, following. Can.
That way you don't have to pick up the bid packets.
Yeah, let me, let me, let me, my screen, uh, put something on that.
Forty-third dollar price, that's round four, two, six, twenty-seven.
We got that.
That's four, two, two, nine, right, it's a deep right.
Oh, that is.
We go, we go twenty, be back to twenty-six on Monday?
Oh, yeah, yeah. I mean.
Let's go ahead and say for August twenty-sixth.
I, I, I care a bit, cause I get very bad speakerphone, but, you know, when we jump around like this, my danger already set for that term.
We, we did the twenty-sixth, people be on it, we just played that, like, we said, they can have, give your bid, we're asking you. How many?
I've been with you since the first one, because we.
Do you don't want to, I think, when you come take a walk, I'm not gonna make it on me.
Yeah.
It should be the twenty-sixth, or the state, or as you know.
Or as you.
I have two, what we got? We got, that's where it is.
Twenty-sixth, that'll be my weekend, three days picture, pack it up, go through and look at everything.
So.
Uh, I think I'm hoping to approve the motion of the soliciting bid for FEMA DR forty-four twenty-eight test drilling service to establish, and set the, uh, opening bid date for August the twenty-sixth, at ten o'clock.
And let me clarify, I was just talking about you guys having a regular meeting whenever we get that safe, okay? That's what I thought, that's what I thought you were referring.
We'll just do it to twenty, twenty-seven, four Tuesday, ten AM, then.
Okay, you guys just need to, yeah, I mean, the fuel bill is the main issue from what I understand.
Yeah, if we can't address that on the night, then we have to have a Monday to figure that out. Okay, does anybody want to make a motion, advertise the bid, then set the date for August twenty-sixth, ten AM?
Second.
Is that Allison, then Ray?
Yes.
Order.
Uh.
Ray Moore.
Uh.
Al Changer.
Uh.
Donnie Bush.
Uh.
Now, I just want to say quite honestly, I mean, you don't get to schedule it around when we can be here and not do something like that. I thought you were talking about the regular meeting. And what I was.
Well, we got, we got, we got about four pages that have to bid on, so it's gonna take them long, get off the project. So we advertise, then have to give him, come in, picture a bid up, and give him a week to do it.
I mean, all honestly, the rule says that if you're supposed to have a county attorney figure, I mean, as far as being here presently, I can Skype you, I can do whatever, like we did the other day for D P, so don't get involved up in, hold up county business because of our business.
Well, I think they really hope to do it, but, but gotta give them, gotta give them a good week, three days, cause they a lot of, a lot of sites to look at.
And, we not changing anything yet, so, like I said, we're on the, on the Tuesday, on the twenty-seventh.
Okay, approval to publish advertisements, missing bids for the following product, that are expected to accumulate exceeding the particular threshold during the course of fifteen years, established date, for open bids of the janitor supply, shop supplies, park, asphalt, pipe, gravel, petroleum product, judicial standard, water treatment service, and bridge supply. It kind of goes right along with the way they put it in the paper. Uh, I've got something to bid, but I need to call them and get them proper to resubmit a bid, a bunch of people turn their bid on paper July. We can advertise them this week. Uh, in the fourth, eighth. Not the way to do it for the twenty-sixth, too. While we do it, we'll get it three times. We just send it for, uh, ten o'clock, also. On twenty-sixth. Do we have a motion?
I've seen it before, currently right now, and we've got Randy here with us. We ain't changing anything, we're just having, we're just having a regular meeting, four Tuesday, ten AM.
So, and we got another fuel bill we got to pay before that too, so these, these are just, uh, advertising.
I'm just talking about bids, just having a regular meeting.
We talked about that, we can, right? We, we talked about that extra, maybe we'll do it, but, uh. So is everybody, anybody want to make a motion to approve all that bidding and, uh, go ahead and do it, August twenty-sixth, at ten o'clock, also?
Again, if you do it on August twenty-sixth, we'll be at District Court at ten o'clock, but we'll make it work.
Okay.
Be here.
Like I said, I'm just Tuesday, ten AM, but.
I think bigger today, I don't think we'll be here Tuesday, Florida, I think everybody's gone Tuesday.
What is Tuesday?
That's a conference, it's like, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, I heard it.
That's all reason, that's reason was done money.
I, I heard ours is a week earlier than yours.
I tried to do it on Monday.
And again, this is a different bid, and maybe if we do, pretty much I'm gonna do it on the bid, but I'll, 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 so.
It all up there.
Yeah.
I mean, you got some treasure here, but there's no, like, nothing that, like, you'll be out of it, that just came in.
Motion, Allison.
Or, we've got.
Second.
Second.
Donnie Bush, second. Ray Moore.
Uh.
Al Changer.
Uh.
Donnie Bush.
Uh.
Order.
Uh.
Al Changer. Approval of pay the following invoices presented by the Brezzi County Sheriff's, out of sheriff program support. Appropriation A, Kentucky retirement system invoice for two hundred eighty-two dollars and seventy-two cents. B would be holiday end invoices for the annual sheriff contract of seven hundred and eight dollars and ninety cents.
Motion. Second.
Ray Moore. Al Changer.
Uh.
Donnie Bush.
Uh.
Order. Ray Moore.
Uh.
Al Changer. Approval of payment of Kentucky election supplies, number zero, 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 four, in amount of seven thousand four hundred eighty-one dollars and twelve cents.
Motion.
Al Changer.
Second.
Donnie Bush.
Uh.
Order.
Uh.
Ray Moore.
Uh.
Al Changer.
Uh.
Al Changer. Approval to disperse payment of, payment to Hinkle contracts for contract in the amount of thirteen, nineteen thousand three hundred twenty-four dollars and sixty-eight cents, for the payment of all current outstanding invoices.
Motion. Second.
Anybody motion? Order. Al Changer, second.
Yeah.
Order.
Uh.
Ray Moore.
Uh.
Al Changer.
Uh.
Donnie Bush.
Uh.
Approval of transfer nineteen thousand three hundred twenty-four dollars, sixty-eight cents from the road phone, jerker transfer, appropriation number zero, two, dash nine, two, zero, zero, nine, nine, nine. The road phones are crushed on, flash travel, appropriation, zero, two, dash sixty-one oh five, dash four, nine, for the sole purpose of paying. And I'll receive that. Four. Four? I'll send it, uh, Hinkle contract invoices.
Motion. Second.
Order.
Uh.
Ray Moore.
Uh.
Al Changer.
Uh.
Donnie Bush.
Uh.
Just first payment in amount of one hundred dollars and seventy-two cents to Jackson Fiscal Court, due to the overpayment of occupational tax. They sent a payment in, I think they sent it in again. And we need to reimburse them back. No motion.
Motion. Second.
Donnie Bush, making. Order. Ray Moore.
Uh.
Al Changer.
Uh.
Donnie Bush.
Uh.
Order.
Uh.
Okay, here's what we had kind of talked about before you got to the meeting, something with the typo, or just getting added to it, or do you think the West Bank bill? Uh, here's how I think we should read or could read, is the all approval, is approval to disperse payment in amount of thirty-one hundred sixty-two dollars and forty-seven cents to Kent Aids, and for all current outstanding invoices in order to avoid service in, in the, and there, where I think we can get a West, fuel, a West Bank fuel bill in. And the main purpose for hazardous, and, um, oh, my, Chris just forgot to hand it in there, Waple.
Did we do that? Did we do that?
We can, we can put a, add your sentence and then put and. For all current outstanding invoices in order to avoid service.
It needs, it needs to be done.
Just specify for the West Bank.
Okay, that's, that's how I'm going to, here, here approval to disperse payment in amount of thirty-one sixty-two forty-seven cents to Kent Aids. And for the current outstanding wish banks invoices in order to avoid service. You know, what, what happened here is about fifty more, and we took the end fifty more because what, what she done when they cut the card off? She was just cashing in, cashing out, she actually just run an invoice and hold them, and we have to pay them fifty more instead of West Bank.
And pay both of them.
So we'll place it on the charge account.
Right, yes. She didn't charge it, but it just hold it for a little. That was, I think, your model of wish bank bill for the one he passed in order to pay out the fifty more bill.
Motion. Say.
Okay, Bill O'Cheney.
Ah.
Donnie Bush.
Ah.
Roy Darrell.
Ah.
Ray Moore. Approval of payment to Eagle information service, the L C in amount of nine thousand dollars first of the fiscal court of county software invoice number four, eight. This is where we.
It's going on now.
In the motion.
Motion.
Donnie Bush, Bill O'Cheney.
Say.
Bill O'Cheney. Donnie Bush.
Ah.
Roy Darrell.
Ah.
Ray Moore.
Ah.
Bill O'Cheney.
Ah.
Will O'Cheney.
One second, we got under, we ain't paid it. We did it till then or something.
Crystal, Crystal has got all the bills that's never been put on the plan list, and she's in the process of putting that plan list together.
I think she never get eight or nine, they have something over called.
So we're going to call another meeting to pay these or?
Yeah, I think we're going to do that, when she gets them all together, we're going to need to, um. It's not as much as the one that's outstanding, it's one that's due now. And if she can get them done, we just, whatever dates you get them done, we'll go ahead and do twenty-four hour notes and pay them. We could have put in our, with the fifty mark west maker, she ain't got them on process yet. Approval of payment in twenty eighteen nineteen plates eagle contract and invoices, uh, number one nine one zero two zero seven, that's Cedar one in amount of two hundred twenty-three thousand four hundred seventy-nine dollars and sixty percent. Upon the receipts of the county relay will be reimbursed.
Now, there's one.
Yeah, I was going to say, we still stray branch and, uh, logging on that, that become common on that, uh. We should be getting the word, I hope we get it Friday, but we didn't. And then also Cedar being down there.
That works.
Yeah, we, we actually thought we were going to get in our CS, and we may, but we went ahead and added on to the thing with this. But got a call this week and Craig Cottle was going to try to put it in on the emergency fund or we can get it, cause it's, it's just not stray branch.
I think quickly it does.
If they approach, if they approve it, and they just now got their money in, so they may, uh.
If this field takes, I mean, they do.
And I think the commissioner was gone on vacation last week and then probably put it to, you know.
And they could be done with it.
So, uh, we still, we, we will be reimbursed back from this, uh, but we still got one job to do.
So if that's included in the stray branch?
No.
It's not included in that draft.
So we have a motion on that.
Motion.
Ray Moore.
Say.
Bill O'Cheney. Donnie Bush.
Ah.
Roy Darrell.
Ah.
Ray Moore.
Ah.
Bill O'Cheney.
Ah.
Approval of disperse payment in amount of seventy dollars to the Brezak County coroner harvest event for the reimbursement of fuel. I think he went on a trip and we don't have a car to get paid for it and couldn't stick it in sometime back. That's on that.
Motion.
Donnie Bush. Can I say?
Say.
Bill O'Cheney.
Ah.
Donnie Bush.
Ah.
Roy Darrell.
Ah.
Ray Moore.
Ah.
Will O'Cheney. Uh, approval to disperse payment in amount of one seventy-seven, one hundred seventy-seven dollars sixty-two cents to Clinton Hudson, George Rivers for training being reimbursed.
Motion.
Second, we have a motion that you don't.
We can.
Uh, Roy Darrell. Ray Moore.
Ah.
Bill O'Cheney.
Ah.
Donnie Bush.
Ah.
Approval to contract with all firm of form visited core eighteen and nineteen. Uh, last couple of weeks we've had two different names, I think, is, uh, you have ASM on the all firm or?
I talked to Michael Williams with the doctor's office, and it works a little bit different than I thought. They approve for a CPA firm to do our, because they're so near, they won't do it. Once they do that, it's up to the fiscal court has to vote and actually contract with one, now, but when you were asked, Cottle and Associates, they do Kentucky River Community Carers all it, which has like a fifty million dollar budget. And he told me he could do ours for somewhere between six and eight thousand dollars. Uh, typically, after in the past, the weekend when Karen Charlotte. It was twenty thousand dollars.
Twenty-two or something.
Yeah, so.
So we're, so what is the motion, what is, I think, to, to approve to contract?
With Cottle and Associates, with Cottle and Associates.
Motion. Say.
Cottle and Associates. Do you make a motion now?
Yeah.
If you say it, Donnie.
Ah.
Ray Moore.
Ah.
Bill O'Cheney.
Ah.
Donnie Bush.
Ah.
Roy Darrell.
Ah.
Uh, approval to establish to county twenty nineteen real estate property tax at sixteen point four cents per hundred of access valuation comprehension rate. Um, I believe, is that a change from?
That, this is a, a compensating rate, we have two options, to say that's compensating rate, which is just a rate that will generate the same amount of revenue as you had last year. Or the four percent increase, which you'd have to have a public hearing, and every year you all always done.
Yeah.
When we bought on that, people was very, we were raising taxes though.
Well, you have to.
Here's the thing, you don't, you don't have to actually approve of it, okay, you just have to accept it. Though we've done this.
Uh, fiscal courts, all right, they don't have.
Oh, no, I thought, I thought you were talking about tax districts, I thought that.
The, the, the valuation of all the taxable property in the county generally goes down every year. And therefore the rate changes, but the revenue never stays the same.
Is the rate sixteen point four, is that?
Sixteen last year, it was sixteen point four next year.
I don't know what.
Sixteen what last year?
If, I think it was sixteen last year, sixteen point four.
If you go below the compensating rate, there are laws that you have to give back your coal severance money, dollar for dollar. For the amount of revenue that you're going to lose back going below the compensating rate.
I don't think it was sixteen four, I'm not sure, you got any?
It's sixteen four this year. No, I don't, I don't know what it was last year.
Normally you're going to let point four every year, it comes to be more than that.
Now, I can go get it, it's my office, come go get it.
Okay, let's go ahead and go on down to, uh, we'll come back to that one. Approval of pay quarterly support in amount seven thousand dollars monthly to senior citizen and pay the senior citizen check in amount of thirteen hundred forty dollars. And we're actually behind the month, this thirteen forty should have been, uh, for June, I'm pretty sure, and June. I think it got June, this could be June, this could be July, but one month, she ain't got, she's a month behind, but this probably is June. And then seven thousand, y'all go get forty-five thousand dollars in support, and that, that's still under. It's forty-four thousand eighty dollars a pound, too. Oh, wow. See if you want to do.
Not a motion.
Yeah. Motion, Roy Darrell.
So you think the thirteen forty ought to be twenty-six eight?
No, 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 we can't share that.
What is it?
On the, on the singer, on the cooker, we got a month behind on that lady's check, thirty-nine forty dollars, we pay that once a month. And then to get quarterly score, pay the quarter.
Okay.
We should be going in here for the last month, I mean, last week, truthfully, we had one month we had our check.
Cause we've had a thousand dollars, three thousand dollars a quarter to them right now. And then thirteen hundred forty dollars a month, I think he got his June check, didn't he?
Yeah, that was for three thousand.
So, yeah. It was, yeah, that's all for the.
Cause the thirteen, so July is the one he ain't got, that's what he keep coming in, that's for the cook for thirteen forty. And then he just got his check for the program support this week. And it's, and so that just comes out of that report. And if you look at it, he put it at forty-five thousand, we, uh, said he put it for, it comes to forty-four thousand eighty dollars. And he said the radio auction they had was really low pressure, and he said that was about, he said that was a settlement where he could operate, uh, through the line. So we're in our way, motion, is that a second?
Say.
Would he will?
And I've been motion to discuss that every month, right, the thirteen hundred?
Yeah, yeah, thirteen forty, it's, it's, it's have a sure, but for the amount thirteen hundred forty dollars monthly.
Okay.
Uh, I would like to look at maybe. I would like, I would like to look at, I would like to look at taking maybe the cooking, even the fuel bill and putting on stand orders, like electric films, that way. They still pay that.
Well, unless I'm looking at, which ultimately, let's step on the banner, it's actually a head to approve, and then we change back there.
So, uh, Roy Darrell, wait, motion, Bill O'Cheney, uh, Roy Darrell.
Ah.
Ray Moore.
Ah.
Bill O'Cheney.
Ah.
Donnie Bush.
Ah.
Will O'Cheney. Resolution of the Brezak County Board of Bill Pay rates for the year twenty nineteen, the eighth cent to remain in eighth cents per hundred of access valuation. We just need to vote on this so I can sign it, and then she can send it in, and that could be done in about a week or so.
Is that, was that the same rate as last year?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, twenty nineteen, the eighth cent to remain that eighth cent per hundred.
And I like, I like reading that this is something you all said, you don't approve it.
So we all. Three hundred and ten, we'll sign it.
Can I say? Say.
Uh, Bill O'Cheney. Donnie Bush.
Ah.
Roy Darrell.
Oh.
Consideration in, uh, to adopt Boomer Lane, play on, pump three, so we have a county real plan. And this was on the last one, you went check that the R R would get, um, um, places to adopt them. Um, so I considerate of approval to do this. Can I say it? Can I say it?
I like to look, we need to, it more than some out in history, but I think with, uh, everything with, with the personnel and the road park and everybody, I think we need to hold off on, adopting any roads just then.
Uh, okay, but really a matter of holding off, uh, uh, I mean, we can, we've got two to do, but, uh, this is actually how the road fund comes in too.
I understand that.
So do we have a second or not, Billy? Yeah, clear lane, this, this city, Boomer Lane again, Barwick, clear lane is a district woman, Plum Creek's in, Fennel Reed, that's yours or district two? Do we have a second? Motion, I can say. Uh, signing of confer, conferences of deputy Brezak County judge exactly by fiscal court for the mandate of. Uh, K R is sixty-seven, seven eleven, sixty, uh, I can't. I would pay a point twenty-five here.
Yeah.
Approval to establish twenty nineteen real property tax rate at sixteen point four per hundred of access valuation. How much would it last year?
Fifteen point three.
Fifteen?
But now here's, here's the, the sixteen point four, that's something that's kind of like our department, local government. On the other hand, you have your personal property tax rates, that could, will actually go down, last year it was twenty-one point two seven, the rate we got there is twenty point six. So.
One, one, twenty-one point two seven to what?
Uh, twenty point six.
So that's, and that's if we'd have to approve the sixteen point four, generating the same money, as you had last year, it's fifteen point four.
It is, that's right, the, the rate itself is fluctuating, but the revenue is not.
Right.
And it's based on, you know, your home state exemptions, property looks for whatever value. Just your overall basketball, all right, right here, just to put perspective, in two thousand eighteen, the real property valuation in our county was just over three hundred thirty million dollars. This year, according to P V A office, it's just over three hundred twenty-two million dollars. So according to the P V A's calculations, we've lost almost eight million dollars in taxable real property.
Which everybody still might guess.
And because of that, the rates fluctuate. You know, if, if the valuation goes up next year, the rates, you know, the rates will fluctuate.
Will it approve?
It's, it costs a taxpayer more money by that rate going up, and it's.
It's a tax rate.
Yeah.
Your property is down to one point. Uh, we have a motion to, um, property tax rate sixteen point four per hundred of access valuation, not begin to run.
Yeah, turn it on.
Okay, you have a motion to approve the real property tax rate of sixteen point four per hundred, ten back six five.
I just, the board was a little tense on that.
There you go, down the entire right, if they calculate, Bill O'Cheney, uh, tells you, here's your compensate rate, here's your four percent increase rate.
There's one, 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 channel fifty, access figure rated on the, the other here going down.
Yeah, I've got one down, one, one, two, one. And, and. But I got some later, if you want to put the minutes from Department of Local Government, tell us what our two options are, and this is the lower of two options.
So the two, two option there, where's?
Uh, sixteen point four is the compensating rate, the four percent increase is seventeen cents per one hundred dollars, unless that's a value.
So it's always, it's always sixty away.
That's right.
If you're sixteen point four.
This is the lower. That's the least.
If we vote, this is gonna say, one, six percent.
That's right.
We have a motion. I have a motion. Another, another, give one. Do you mind? Do we have a second? Somebody have a second?
I have a second.
You Ray Moore?
Uh.
David Kenter?
Uh.
Donnie Bush?
Uh.
Lord Earl?
Oh.
Okay, introduction of Miss Shorty Bailey, uh, deputy Breck County judge, we could go thirty, um, I had to put her in a finance officer position and health insurance coordinator, D O A got real good certification on it, but I didn't know this is a position that, uh, I campaigned against, but again, she's on back with a few months, having a tournament, and, uh, that's why I pointed her at, uh, deputy, the Breck County judge. I'll be a motion on her anyway, but the next one down is assignment comprehension, uh, the fifth year old, the center of faith, uh, is mandated by a table, it's sixty-seven, eleven, sixty-seven, sixty-four, final thirty, paragraph four.
Were you talking about, were you talking about a temporary job or?
Uh, we just sell salary and, uh, it's more of a retirement, I don't think you like.
Well, you got mine.
Seven months, uh, this is a position that I campaigned against and said I wouldn't have, but I just, uh, uh, she got hillfish, she grew up, she's been on the front of the panel a lot. Last two months, she may have worked six days, maybe complete your vein out, bring home, that was, that time, but I know last week or two weeks she hasn't been in, any, she's been over, stay off her foot, uh, who's her toy, who's her foot? She went this week to the doctor and they just come there and take a shot, they give her I V and she ended up with two more mysteries on her, told, and just convinced them, but, y'all said, y'all said that the.
She, she currently on the payroll?
Yeah, yeah, she, she, the last two payroll, she used her vacation time, now, and they got, she got his comp now.
She relates for what?
No. They said, what did I want to come on?
Okay, are there any other documents here?
Uh, or? I don't know if it became more, I think just the.
Pay, maybe she can.
Uh, it's basically, she can't get the form and, and I can do. And reading the statute.
He can't hire, okay?
It's not a hire, it's a point.
Yeah.
It's a second.
Okay.
I guess the person could be appointed in the job, if you're going salary, said, this process, statute, statute does not say what it is, it says a reasonable amount.
The problem is, uh, the budget's been passed, uh, June the third and second, reading, there's no line item in the books for even a deputy judge's position whatsoever. Okay, and then, according to Department of Local Government, D O G, uh, deputy judge's position is not mandated, not a mandated appropriation. And I've got my K R N shirt, forty-five, one, two, four, four, which basically deals with, uh, obligation, not authorized appropriation in the budget, so.
I could say she's, she, I could say she's appointed, and she's all, you get to get, well, here, I'll tell you what I'm saying, I'm touching some money, and she worked on that. We got, we're gonna get a check, we want to spend it, get for a hundred and seven, um, my secret, my secretary makes the same as Lottie made, she was actually saving forty-one thousand dollars, not counting, uh, no benefits, it would probably be a hundred and twelve thousand.
What's your, what's your figure, do you know?
Uh, that, that's, that's your own, I, I, your own, maybe seven, eighty, ninety, a hundred and seven.
A hundred and seven thousand?
Yeah, we got, oh, that, oh, maybe we got.
Call it every, call it every. Yeah, that has to stay in, yeah, that has to stay in.
No, we did, we did tell them that, that, that was just, we got the check on, we got last, we got, we're gonna put it like in paper, plain on paper, and then.
So we will take the part of a hundred and seven thousand?
We should go a hundred and seven thousand, some.
You call a job.
They're gonna, they also, in the city, in the city, and I'm getting right at four.
We did receive that, we did receive that, and, and it has, there's a script, and I got the email on that.
Yeah, I got it, I got it too, but I.
What's the certain, it cannot be used for the administration of government, is what the email says.
Well, for that law, the deputy judge's position?
It's an administrative position. And he really writes, he writes the judge, so it can be used for that.
What do you say to that?
And he's talking about, we got a dish going, called saver title, and there's restrictions on that money, D O G sent in, the first one is that cannot be used for the administration of government, and it has to say in the L G A.
I don't believe you're gonna do it, make the, make the budget transfer.
You just have to do it.
I wonder if anything, you said.
That's the problem, you gotta work it taking, work it, work it, you know? We've already passed the vote.
It would have to be down to general fund.
But the hundred and seven thousand cannot be used.
Hmm, may, may, I, I, I just think it was raised, the word in that way, but I mean, even if it don't, I mean, you ship life, you mean the budget, just because the budget is shit, what it is, you, you still, you're going to.
Where you gonna cut it?
That's, that's your own.
I got it right there. That's your fault.
That's left to you all to sit down, you can say that, that's five, one of y'all sell equal salary, so.
We got another gear.
Okay, you refusing to say that, uh, that again?
You're saying we got another gear.
I don't think you got a choice on that. We're gonna have to make a.
You wanna, you wanna talk about raising tax? You're ready for that money?
You just done that.
Not to, not to give Charlotte Bailey the job we did.
But, uh, I'm horny, so, y'all wanna say the reasonable salary or not?
Forty-five thousand.
Yeah, we're starting, or we're hitting, we're gonna get that, Lord Earl. Forty-five thousand.
You don't have to, you don't know, whatever.
You should just, you got a house, where's it come from?
Let me give you some information, my process in line, was talking about that money that proposed to use. This comes straight from law agreement, D O G. These are L G A funds, they must be spent on the following categories, and cannot, under any circumstances, be used for expenses related to the administration of government. There's like six, public safety, environmental protection, public transportation, health, recreation, libraries, educational facilities, social services for the poor, industrial economic development, vocational education, secondary wood industry development. Yeah.
Lord Earl, through the number, we might have to work on the number of, we're going on here. Lord Earl, wait, vote for forty-five, that's second. Okay, vote for nine, that's second. Uh, approval to establish county twenty nineteen personal property rate tag in twenty point six per hundred of access valuation, all of twenty-eight, eight.
Twenty-eight. Twenty-eighteen, twenty-one point two seven.
Twenty-one point two seven in twenty-eighteen, so the property, the proposal is to drop it from twenty-one, twenty-seven down to twenty point six.
So we don't have to be a wash, twenty-two, almost.
We have a legal option to accept the tax rate of twenty point six, and that is a decrease of, uh.
That's same difference in that, though, with the one.
No, that, that one, something this year is gonna go down.
Six. Motion, I don't think it was that. Second.
David Kenter?
Uh.
Donnie Bush?
Uh.
Lord Earl?
No.
Ray Moore?
Yes.
Uh, approval to enroll a direct deposit, and I'm a piss big, I live along with, with you, direct deposit agreement with the government office, the block development for receipts of all county road rate, in whole production, ready to, and authorize the judge to execute, uh, should be signed agreement, but, uh, what this is, I got a check here this week, and I think it will date at August. Not immediately, July. They're, they're pretty cheap, by the time we get here, it's got five, six, seven, like they left on it, so if I do it this way, if you direct deposit in, and maybe we get right in, and do the, issue management, check, check, that's the deposit report, and, uh, say, say this is what, we enter, we quit, it gets, uh, made.
And it's better, or, or, on the purpose and everything.
Yeah, you can give a grant, or, to, to, like a law.
Second.
David Kenter, is that you, Donnie, second?
Yeah.
Donnie Bush?
Uh.
Lord Earl? Ray Moore?
Yeah.
Approval to issue payment to pro player in amount twenty-eight thousand five hundred sixty dollars, reimbursement, uh, one, two, six, one, nine, eight, is payable from the solid waste recycling grant, uh, this is a trailer that's already been gotten, that should have been paid for, paid, paid. We got, we got to be on that. Lord Earl, wait, second?
Second.
Uh, Lord Earl?
Uh.
Ray Moore?
Uh.
David Kenter?
Uh.
Donnie Bush?
Uh.
Our court, Mr. Ray. Another class.
Yep, he is, very good on that. Uh, second, vote for the jury, please.
I'll look it, second.
Donnie Bush?
Uh.
Lord Earl?
Uh.
Ray Moore?
Uh.
And then here's the deal, the, the gas bill.
Third floor.
You got a fee for this.
Thirty-four.
Exactly.
Thirty-four.
I have to call from number thirty-four.
Ah, I'm trying to figure that.
Lord Earl, number thirty-four. Number thirty-four, that is there, she had.
Thirty-four dollars.
Thirty-four, that's.